We're going to call to order the Wayne Township Board of Trustees meetings for October 21st, 2025. Welcome, everyone. Please sign the log sheet, the guest sheet in the back for our records. We appreciate it. Then we'll roll call.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Ms. Colvin?
Here.
And Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Do you have a question?
Okay, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a breathing and justice for all.
Next, can I have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting on October 7th?
I'll make a motion to approve those meetings.
Second.
All righty, voice vote, all in favor of approving the October 7th meeting minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
And ayes like signed, motions carried.
Do we have any additions, removables, or disclosures from the posted agenda?
Nope.
Okay. So, we do have a public hearing at 7:30. We're going to be going over zoning code text amendments at that time. So, next, we have citizens comments.
Ms. Colvin, 33, just in the way of wins Ohio. I'm here on behalf of the Convention Estates. As a follow-up, there is a rally next week on the 28th. There are two, House joint Resolution 2 and Senate Jones joint Resolution 3 are in play. Hopefully, they pass this session. And along with that, I didn't talk to you about this before. It's called faithful commissioner bills are in tandem with that. So, what that deals with is a delegate process. So, they're already making coming. So, just getting you guys an update. You guys noted in support of that, and it's still going. I also, I have a Zoom I'm going to be doing. I was at a national conference in Indianapolis just recently where I'm speaking to other municipality, other people interested in doing this project, doing what we're doing here locally. So, I'm going to talk to a guy in California, a guy in Arizona this evening as a follow-on of that. So, things are moving forward on that, and there's a lot of energy. And so, looking forward to do that, make our situation better at the local level, you know, rein it in the federal government with large ass and bring our tax dollars home. So, I think that's all good news for all of us. Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Yeah. Hi, my name's Kelly Martin. I've talked to you before about my concerns with the fire department. I just had a few follow-up questions, and maybe you can help me. A few things is, I was wondering if we can get job descriptions for the actual chief and lieutenants and what their outlines are, and also how many volunteers we currently have under the current chief. And I'd also like to know how many we did have prior to that, and if any of the old volunteers are still left, or have they all left, and why is that? That's one of my concerns. I'm interested in the total operating budget and information, if that could be put out on our website about the renewal working amount and what all that entails, and what their future vision is for the fire department. I mean, we have this $6 million building. What's the vision? Where are we moving? I mean, moving ahead with that? Are we trying to get a full-time department? Are we going to maintain it as a volunteer? And if we're going to maintain it as a volunteer, I'd like to know how much experience the people that are there now have, because I know we had, in the previous years, quite an experienced volunteer force that had been working there for a long time. And I'm wondering what we have now, if any of those other volunteers remain, or are they all gone? Because that is a concern of mine. Let's see. I know we talked about residency requirement, that there is none for our fire department. Since we are a volunteer department, I'm wondering, maybe that would be a good idea to have residency for our volunteers, the chief, and everybody so they're here. They're, if they're not working here, they're still here when they're out of their office hours, right? So, when they come home at night, they're here, but they're not coming from another community. So, I just was wondering if we can maybe visit that? That's one of my concerns. Also, it was brought up to me previously about, I guess, our prosecutor's office looked at a law that was back in 1938 about how we can't have part-time people also volunteering. Now, I read that law, and I'm not a prosecutor. I don't have a law degree, but I did, I was in the court a lot as a claims adjuster, and I headed the litigation department for that insurance company. And I don't read that law that way. So, I'm kind of wondering, is there anything in writing that they put out saying, this is what we see, why we can't do this with volunteers? Like, if you're part-time, you cannot volunteer. Was there anything in writing that they put out? Because I haven't seen that, if there is.
They, they, they are-
The prosecutor's office?
Okay, okay. All right. And if you're talking about the federal people.
No, I'm more interested in our prosecutor's office, because I was led to believe that our prosecutor's office made that decision that we can't have people that are working part-time also volunteer, that there was conflict there. Let's see.
Ms. Martin, do you have those in, those questions in writing?
I can put them in writing. Do you want me to submit them?
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I can do that. That's no problem. So, I just go to the website and put it that way?
Send that, send an email to me, send it to any trustees.
Oh, great, yeah. I'd be happy to do that.
Yep. And then we can get back later on that.
I missed the candidates meeting, birthdays, and people that are sick and things like that. I wasn't able to make it. But I understood that there was 124 squad runs and 34 fire runs, is from what I understand. I don't know if that's correct or not in the last month. I was wondering if they, when they do those runs and they put out what, how many there were, does it also include which were mutual aid or which were just us, our meeting, Wayne Township? I'd be interested in that information. And I also am interested in who, I know, I have a lot of questions.
I understand. You have a three-minute time limit.
Okay.
And others that are wanting to submit.
Okay. My other thing is, I would like to know if everyone's cross-trained to operate the fire engines, the tanker trucks, and the squad.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Please submit those terms in writing. Wonderful.
I have other ones too, so I'll submit.
Very good. It's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. We're collaborating. Watch yourself with this. Shelby, it's in 6490, four on the avenue. Again, to go on about fire departments, descriptions, and also want to know how the sauerkraut, because it was handled as far as our per-training people or outside sources. Was there anybody on our department here? How many? And let's see. How many volunteers are still left? The average length of experience when someone comes on? I know we have a great career center. I know, are they hired right from the career center? Is there any mentoring going on with those that have experience? And I think that's probably about what we have so far. But we'll get those questions to you.
Thanks.
Excellent. Sure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other citizens comments? Do you know? Okay. Moving forth, road department report. Road supervisor Scott Camery is on vacation. So, Gus, do you have a report, or are we just going to go and watch the minutes?
I have it here. I think it's, basically, there are burning has been done for this year. Cedar Hill, they had a small cleanup ditching project that's been finished. Bush whacking has been done for 2025. Still having some problems with the new mower, overhead. We're working on that and getting that repaired. Speed level sign for car drives been installed. They're currently working on the final round of flooring for 2025. And Scott is still, he was in the office last week, and we're working on the road resurfacing schedule for 2026. They're planning on doing some garden row repairs next week. The old regerator, they have a cylinder that's fallen out on it that they're having to rebuild, and that has become a task. Again, he's looking at, probably trying to do away with that piece of equipment, maybe replacement in the near future or future, as finances become available. And he also has a lot of other small projects that need to complete on his list, and then they'll, after that, they're redoing some leak control as needed, and leaks come down, and the rest of it will be getting, snow power equipment hooked up and so forth, and ready to go for work. He has reported all drugstore equipment's available and for use. And number 11 is a line, and they'll probably have a little agenda for next week. They've had some issues with trucks pulling up Mill Street and Main Street also in Mount Holly, so he would like to post that as a note traffic, or excuse me, note trucks, because it's a regulatory sign. But in order to put that regulatory sign up, it needs to be approved by the board. Probably draft some dress research for that. Now, that's all we have. We'll be back in a minute.
Excellent.
I want to take care of that tree on the town road. Tony?
Okay. Thank you, Gus. Moving forth, fire department report. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much for being able to answer one or two questions that were asked. Our Ohio Sauerkraut Festival recap on Friday, I'm sorry. There it is. Saturday, we had two volunteer members, firefighter Derek Brown and lieutenant David Dow. Our part-time members were firefighter paramedic Brad Lawson, EMT Diana Lazar, firefighter medic Taylor White, firefighter medic Molly Doyle, firefighter EMT Robert Scott, EMT Greg Worth, and myself were there covering the Sauerkraut Festival. We had one serious MVA that evening that required to use the care flight, and we handled nine calls outside of the festival boundaries that day. On the 12th, we had 11 calls outside of the boundaries of the Sauerkraut Festival. We had two MBAs, one after the Sauerkraut Festival that used air care, was an entrapment the crews handled. And then we had one rider from the hill climb that required care flighted out for his injuries. The crews that day on Sunday were volunteer members firefighter Derek Brown, firefighter EMT Josh Carter, and lieutenant David Dow. Our part-time members were firefighter medic Tyler White, firefighter EMT Todd Bramble, firefighter EMT Jenna Key, EMT Diana Lazar, firefighter EMT Robert Scott, lieutenant Patterson, this is chief law, Jim myself. I'd like to thank Massey Township, Turtle Creek Township, and Clear Creek Fire District for their mutual aid during that very busy weekend that we had. During one of our auto accidents that we had, we had six, a total of six patients. We took, no, both of our squads were out. We got a refusal on the one guy and took four other, and we actually stripped Massey Township of everything they had, because they've got the Renaissance Festival going on at the same time. So, I called Chief Bernard, made sure we could use both their squads, and then Squad 91, I think, was coming back available, so I'll send them your way if you need them. So, I'd like to thank our partner Premier Health. What they do is they handle the onsite medical coverage, so anything that happens within the festival grounds, Premier Health has the gators and that special events medical team. They handle anything, all the first aid and walk-ups and stuff, and they go out and bring people if they need to be transported, and they bring them back to the ambulance, and from there, we'll transport them. The trade-off for them doing that is that we go up to the airshow and help them out there in the airshow. It's a slightly bigger event, but it works out usually. They're a great, great partner with that. Community engagement, we participated in the Wayne Elementary Touching Truck on October 14th. It was great to see the kids again. They came out, and they were telling us what was on the truck. We do a lot compacted in October. Thursday and Friday, we are, we'll be at Wayneville Christian School doing our presentation there, and we're mixing it up this year for the first grade. The first, I'm, the crews are going to go see the first grade at the school. Usually, they bring them over to the fire station. However, they have 100-plus kids, and we've only got an hour of time. That's a lot of kids in a small space, so we're going to go take that program to them. So, we're excited to pilot that program this year, so. Annual hose testing is getting ready to begin. We test all of our fire hoses annually, and that's all I have out of the stack and presentation for the work session.
Excellent. Thank you, chief. Any other questions for chief? Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Moving forth, zoning department report. Good evening, Stacy.
Oh, good evening. Excuse me. The BZA had two hearings last week. A variance hearing at 9944 State Route 42 is approved, and a conditional use site plan for 7219 State Route 42 was denied. That, it was actually to be split into two hearings for the conditional use and then separately for the site plan. But since the conditional use portion was denied, the site plan did not go forward. We have our public hearing tonight on the zoning text amendments, and otherwise, I have the magazine reconciliation there for you. Basically, out of a total of $9,217.61 for the magazine, our revenue was $5,397.50, so the township cost was $3,820.11, or 61 cents. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Appreciate it. Moving forth, administrators report. Good evening, Gus.
Before I get started, I'd like to thank Stacy for always, as always, every, you know, twice a year getting that magazine out. I'd say we give that product out to all residents in the township for less than the cost of the stamps. Like, it's a good value for the dollar. Up PWC project, we're just waiting on the final invoice, and then payments and distributions and disbursements will be completed, the project. Close High Sauerkraut Festival, I thank the road department, fire department, administrative staff, and elected officials for their participation in another outstanding festival. As y'all know, at Greg Leonard, a huge turnout for both days, and it was often exceptionally for this year, a high demand for fire EMS services compared to years past. I think chief is going to work on some of the calls that, for whatever reason, this year, there was a, there's a lot more runs down to the hill climb than we never had in the past. So, there's a missed connection there that is going to get worked out before next year, hopefully.
I heard a new guy took over the arrangements for that.
You've had more communication with him than I have.
Okay. Well, you know, you need to contact.
Overall, I feel very well-organized, a skilled operations, considered magnitude event, and could be successful, and what for each year wants contributions. I know it takes a couple days out of some large staff members to help with different things, but again, I think it's a benefit of the community. Park intervention week, I'd like to commend the fire chief and his members for all the events that they took place over this period of time, and to emphasize with the community and all residents, the reminder that each individual's part in the intervention. Change those smoke detector batteries, and make sure you have fire extinguisher, and think about it. Highly Park Fall Festival, kept it on Saturday, October 4th. It was estimated attendance was about 600 to 900 people, and they gave away over 300 free tickets, not 30. And this event continues to grow and expand for the friends of the One County Park District. Again, they have a letter and a packet with a thank you from the One County Park District for our support and participation in that project. Preparations, getting a head start on pulling together some forecasting numbers and some projects that are either anticipated or needed over the next several years. This will help us forecast and appropriate for the upcoming years and get expenditures in the proper years, comply with the anticipated upcoming legislative and guidance and something from House Bill 309 and so. And just a miscellaneous stuff, we have an open enrollment half lack meeting this Friday at noon. Here administration going. Got things for everybody, all employees, all county employees, from that black, and we'll show what you currently are rolled in, and you can make adjustments on Friday. Meet the candidates tonight was last night for cover plan. I thank everybody here on the board that's there. Great turnout, and everybody did well. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Gus. Appreciate it. Moving forth, fiscal officer report. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening. I'm trying to keep it short. So, this week, I attended training with the auditor state. It was good training. Training was all about audits and those types of things, even though we pretty had our audits up. But it was good information to go over. Next month, I'll be going to the SECUP conference, which is required by law, since we have investments. And then December, I'll have another training, prepared to close out the books for the year and start the new year. People, so moved right along. I got a training with them Friday in order to do electronic payments and systems, and I should be moving the ticket deposit box over to them this week as well. And when it's done, I'll let you guys know via email and talk a little bit details with that. So, in this period of time, I've talked with a number of fiscal officers from different townships around us, either Mendus County or other counties, about all of these 309s and all that. And so, I've kind of, the direction, I think, so I won't be giving time for the work session tonight, because we're going into appropriations, and I think this is where it's going to get ironed out, appropriation process. But some of the, the plan is going, I'm going to begin to circulate a document amongst through Gus and that, so we can begin to plan out our capital purchases moving forward, and then restructuring some of our accounts, so giving us some capital improvement accounts, some reserve balance accounts. So, it kind of breaks it up one, and it helps, at least for the, for their purposes, the county commission, to see where the money's going, and we can refer back to the capital plans well as to where the money's going. But then, reserve accounts also, also doesn't fall necessarily under the review, so some of, like a contingency accounts and, and budget stabilization accounts, we can build in there, though there's caps on per law, but that will, but that would help reduce a little bit of that as well. So, it's a little bit more of a holistic plan, and so, I will talk about that as we go forward. So, assuming we're going to have a short meeting for the first November meeting, but that following meeting, I would like to do a work session, so we can kind of go through the budget, so we can begin to prepare the appropriations. That way, in December, we can just come in and vote on it, because we've already talked about it and went through it. So, between now and then, I'll start getting some information up to you guys to start your, see, review, and talk, and think about, and then we'll come together and move on for to iron that out.
So, it'll be November 18th.
That's all I have, unless you guys have any other questions? I did meet with our financial advisor, I forgot the paper. We're doing well, and I'll, I'll scan it in and send it to you now, I started talking about it, but we're doing well.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. So, moving forth, old business. Safer Grant, any updates?
Not a word.
Okay. Train kept in position, talk about it later on here. More discussion. Domain name.
So, we want the government to come out and bring down.
Okay. Gus, any update for burning firehouse?
Yes, I got, I got a document to pass out to you. It's, it's just a, I've got a lot of track changes that Mr. Krebs and I've been working on, and so, we're getting ready to finalize that and have it ready to go out. Originally, it was supposed to be out November 3rd, and I'm thinking now it's going to be more like sometime mid-December. But here you can, you can see some of the track changes. There's three copies there for you to take. He was able to finally get some time broken away, and he looked on me yesterday, and actually, at, with the Sauerkraut Festival, I had two more inquiries, and I had one out-of-town inquiry on the fire station. Actually, he was coming through town yesterday Monday, and so, he went up, I had a few minutes, so went down and I gave him a tour request.
Hey, do you want us, do you want to review this online and then we'll email back?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, you can review those track changes. Actually, he just sent that, sent it somewhere that my track change this summer is, but probably tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm going to be working on it again. Brought up a date, and then I can just email back out, see what, that's where we're at. Anything kind of, yes, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. New business, questions or concerns of the bills, have a motion to approve payment of bills that were presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills stated for payment.
I'll second that.
All righty, roll call votes. Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
All right, those motions carried.
Okay, we're going to do one resolution. We'll do Resolution 2025-78. It's a resolution to establish Wayne Township Board of Trustees meeting dates for the year 2026. So, it looks like we're sticking with the normal scheduled period of being the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM. Meetings to be held here at the admin building.
They make a, not all the meetings are 7:00 PM.
You moved to-
No, we did move the regular public meetings at 7:30 on the first Tuesday in December, which you're talking about.
No, the BZA and the zoning are at 6 instead of 7.
Well, I have to think. Okay. That's just the regular public meetings. Then we have the zoning commission meetings that will occur once a month at 6:00 PM on the first Thursday of each month as needed or called for, with the exception of January date being rescheduled to December 31st at 6:00 PM. The Board of Zoning Appeals occurring once a month at 6:00 PM on the third Thursday of each month as needed or called for. Special emergency meetings will be held at the call of any two members of the board, specifying date and time, giving at least 24 hours' notice, and special note required by all particular form or method of notice as required by statute for a public hearing or meeting. Should be given in the form and manner prescribed by statute in addition to notice otherwise required under this resolution. So, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-78. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call votes. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Ms. Colvin?
Yes.
All right, this resolution's been adopted as 21st day of October. All right, this, uh, resolution's been adopted this twenty-first day of October.
So it is seven thirty, uh, Wayne Township Board of Trustees shall not come to order at seven thirty on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five for a public hearing that was scheduled for seven thirty for this date, uh, for a public hearing on text amendments to the zoning code. Stacy Loon will explain the reason for the hearing, the recommendations of the Regional Planning Commission, Executive Committee, and the Wayne Township Zoning Commission, as well as a summary of the amendments. Um, order proceedings, everyone has the right to speak and support or opposition and ask questions. However, to ensure an orderly hearing, we ask that before speaking, you state your name and address for the record. And time limits for each speaker will be set at five minutes. We will first hear from the proponents, then the opponents, and then board will ask questions and then we'll close off the public drink. So Stacy, I'm bringing it over to you.
Great, well, my first question is, would you like me to go through the entire, uh, all the changes again for you? Or, I don't know if anyone's in the audience that has not heard, um, there are no changes except for one. Where I missed, um, there's one chapter with the public advertising requirements, you know, how we changed so you could put on the website. And, um, Facebook, um, missed one of those sections, R P C had, um, pointed that out, so I can.
Let's, let's go ahead and have you talk about it.
Okay, all right, first of all, I just want to say that, um, the regional planning, um, executive committee voted eleven to one to, to, um, recommend approval with that one amendment that I told you. And our zoning commission also, they voted four to zero to, um, recommend approval of all these additions, taking into account, um, the regional planning's, um, recommendation as well. A sip of water and then I will. All right, so I'm just going to scroll through the changes in here and, and go through those with you. All right, so this is just the table of contents. And I won't go over these because they're going to be, um, something I explain as we go through. So the first thing is making changes to, um, our site plan chapter. And this is just going to require a professionally prepared, prepared drawing, um, professionally prepared by the architect, the landscape architect, the engineer or surveyor, um, for any of our applications that have to go through a site plan approval to take away the option of hand drawing or having, um, just a sketch made up. Um, there's just changes in the number of copies and the use of PDFs and email addresses being changed in here. And this here, this is the language, um, that we're taking out, that we publish in the newspaper and going with the, the, the new rules which allow either us, for us to print in the newspaper or on our website and our social media account or on the official website that the state has. So we have all the options. So we have this in our zoning code, um, for about four or five different sections. So I'll just kind of, um, scroll through those until we get to, um, this language here. Requirement for professionally prepared site plan does not apply to secondary dwelling unit applications. And this is just because when someone builds a house, they don't have to submit a professionally drawn site plan. So it's giving them the same option when they apply. Um, this is another advertising, another one. These are conditional uses, site plans, rezoning and variances. And these are administrative appeals, all the same language. Running to this. Okay, um, this is our table of uses, um, by zoning district. And we are adding in language that will not allow cannabis dispensaries, cultivation, processing dispensaries. All of this language is given to us by the prosecutor's office as it indicated that we don't want to allow any of those uses. And as you can see on the table of uses, it's grayed out the whole way across, which means it is not allowed in any of our zoning categories. Um, and down here, um, we did have, we already prohibited these uses, but we've adopted the newer language. So the cross now is just taking out the old language under law. And here we have the solar principal energy production facility. Um, also, we have all, we have also, um, prohibited, um, solar energy facilities in Wayne Township when they are under fifty megawatts. Um, but this is the newer language which spells it out better. So in effect, we're only allowing accessory, um, solar energy, which means it's generated. If you already have a house on the property or business, you'd, you'd be allowed to generate enough for your house, basically. Um, so this is prohibiting it, but it is, as we can see by the law, when it's over fifty megawatts, we can't prohibit it. That goes through the Ohio City Board. And here we just have the addition of salt, defining solar energy as accessory and it's permitted in all these districts and provided you meet the other standards that go along with accessory solar, as with height, number of buildings and so forth. Um, this is the secondary dwelling unit language that we discussed. Secondary dwelling units are ones that are detached, we have standards for them, how big they can be, how many buildings you can have already on your property, um, the living space, the sharing of, um, utilities, sharing the address. Um, and we, like I said, we've always had those as a conditional use. Um, this is just the proposal to allow, um, me as the zoning inspector to approve them, given they meet all of those conditions and standards. While they're on lots of five hundred acres, the ones that would be under five acres would still go through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And some of the rationale for that, as I said, is when you have a lot of five acres, um, you can, you could theoretically have two houses because of the two of them in one. And it's just recognizing that, um, you can't always subdivide either in order to create that lot because of like hand handle lots or irregularly shaped lots. So this, um, conservation design option, this was an option that we had that would allow, um, kind of flexibility in development and it didn't go through the trustees. So it functioned kind of like, um, a planned unit development where you get a lesser yard size for each of the homes, but then there's open space dedication, um, that is part of that neighborhood of development, but it's not in your yard, basically, it's open space. But, um, the idea was to take the conservation design option away from being by right and putting it in as a planned unit development instead. Uh, we had some planned unit development language, but this would be substituted in instead of that. So all of this is just taking that language out of this part of the zoning code and, and then dropping it into the P U D section that we already have. Um, so there it is all back again. And then what's removed here is the original P U D language. And this is just more of the, um, changing that language around to, um, put the C D O into the P U D section. And that's also more of that. This is just defining principal solar energy production facility that we cannot, um, regulate those over fifty megawatts or greater. And then this is just our definition section, we're putting in all the, um, language that goes with the changes, adult use cultivator, cannabis, operators, processor, dispensaries, um, taking out the conservation design. There's the solar energy language changes. And that's, that's everything, if you have questions.
I'm done, first one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy, appreciate it. Okay, so first we will hear from proponents. Okay, proponents, let's come up to the podium. Do I have any proponents? So are there any questions from the board? I have none.
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to say, I know last time I brought up the, um, secondary dwelling piece. And I was going to see if there was any citizens' comments on that, if anybody had any objection to that change. And I had asked Stacy for the number, to give me since twenty twenty, how many secondary dwellings requests we had had through the V Z A and whether they were approved or not, and, you know, some more information about that acreage. And there was actually only one denied, there was three that already had existing buildings on them. They just wanted to change that building into a housing unit on the property and then three were approved. So, um, I just wanted to kind of put that out there, what we've had, like, kind of historically, but nobody has any issues with it, I don't either.
Okay.
Right, like, just, like, if someone had, they couldn't meet, like, like a setback, then they'd still have to go to the V Z A.
Right, right, okay.
We had a couple one oh one on the V Z A, so, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second that.
Want to further for closing the meeting?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
And then these like sign with a say.
Okay, so I need a motion, resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty, or seventy-nine.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine for the zoning amendment changes.
Okay, roll call votes, Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
This, uh, resolution's adopted this twenty-first day of October.
Okay, next resolution is twenty twenty-five dash eighty, a resolution adopting the main township fiscal policy regarding reward, frequent flyer and discount programs in accordance with the Auditor of State technical bulletin twenty twenty-five dash zero one two and Ohio Ethics Commission Advisory Opinion twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
My only, I mean, I like this policy, obviously, but, um, so the township then gets any rewards itself, if there's monetary rewards?
We do on our credit card, but if, um, yeah, because you know there's points, we get that. But if someone has a, a sandwich club, you know, and they're buying, you know, the Christmas thing and they're buying the sandwiches through that sandwich shop, well, they can get the rewards and then use the rewards according to this. Now, this is how the Ethics Commission went because of, uh, federal standing, IRS rules have changed. So they just have followed along and this is really just kind of housekeeping, you know, uh, with the, uh, Auditor of State and, uh, Ohio Ethics Commission, they've asked to, uh, to do well, you know, they said, you know, great policy to do this. So that's what we did before, it was an ethical issue because it seemed as, uh, you know, kind of income and that kind of stuff. They've reversed their opinion now, uh, so now with it though, the policy will say that, you know, if you plan to do that, you have to, uh, have a declaration once a year of what clubs that you belong to or awards for which you belong to. That way we can monitor it, that's the control. And so if you're always going to that sandwich shop, you know, for a party in the township, then that could be an issue. But if that just happens, Stacy, it's not an issue. So that's, uh, part of that control piece of the policy.
Okay. I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty.
I'll second.
All right, roll call votes, Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
This resolution is adopted this, uh, twenty-first day of October.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty-one, it's a resolution adopting the Wayne Township fiscal policy regarding sales tax reimbursement for tax-exempt public office purchases.
So oddly enough, at the, uh, at the training, they were hammering on some of this and then I got home that night and these two policies were sitting in my mailbox from the Auditor of State. So they've, uh, and so apparently they must have had some kind of issue at some point where, uh, people were using their personal money or personal credit card while presenting the public entity's, uh, tax exempt form. And so they've come out and said that's not permissible, you're not allowed to do that. So the only way that you can present a tax exempt form now of your policy through Auditor of State, uh, bulletins and, uh, so you have to be using, you know, our credit card, I P O, or, you know, through one of our vendors that already have it. Same way you can present, um, a tax exempt form. But what it now also does allows us to pay tax. So if, if the employee happens to be at Target or Store and some of the colleges can bring me three nails, they can pay for it, but they have to pay the tax. And we're now allowed to reimburse that tax, uh, for that, uh, because of this, um, so. But it should be, uh, they clarified that this should not be a standard use, it should be a, you know, an occasional or emergency use. So that's what it's there for, it's just, again, the highlights, also they're, they're really getting, uh, tight on, um, us not having tax on anything, uh, so, uh, otherwise, because they were mentioning, uh, more refining, uh, finance recovery against the entities now for having, you know, uh, you know, taxes on that, so, so, that's what that generated from, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt twenty twenty-five dash eighty-one.
Hey, roll call votes, Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Ms. Colton?
Yes.
This resolution's passed this twenty-first day of October.
Any other new business? Any correspondence?
Um, I just had to thank you that I concluded in your package from the One County, uh, Park District for participation. And I assume that everybody got, and even have a day on the five period office, uh, having a community organizational training event for non-for-profit leaders, board members, officers, directors, and volunteers, church, school, charitable and other community organizations. And this is, you know, to deal with, um, theft and so forth and those organizations. So if you call any of those organizations and you'd like a free, uh, consultation or, uh, program, it's really the program that's in the protocol once you get. You got to do something to do in treasure, poor, you know, with the main credit.
There are no other correspondence, do we have any luck to the Fisher's comments? I have none.
I know a lot of you guys are here for your department for the sour crop festival.
festival, you guys did an awesome job, so, appreciate it.
I'm good.
Say thank you Lieutenant Dahl for the email. Just got it. Yeah, works nicely.
Figured I might make it a little bit easier for...
Works nice, thank you.
Any questions?
Okay, so now we're going to go into a work session. Okay, we are done with work session, so we're going to go into executive session regarding personal matters, O R C. one twenty-one point two-two G. one, the, with the, uh, board trustees, administrator, and the fire chief. Consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official for the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensing, or regulated individual, and the motion will be voted on, so I make a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a second?
At eight thirty-eight, I will second.
All righty, boys vote, uh, Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Ms. Colvin?
Here it is, it is nine thirty-eight, we are going to go back into regular session, um, so I make a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-nine, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All righty, all in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Can these like sign, motion's carried?